Tuesday, January 21st. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heather, would you please take role?
Councilmember Raditz.
Here.
Mayor Protem Smith.
Here.
Councilmember Lasky.
Here.
Mayor Sullivan.
Here.
Councilmember Keck.
Here.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Here.
Councilmember Ruzga.
Here.
City manager.
Here.
DPW director.
Here.
Finance director.
Here.
Community development director.
Here.
Police chief.
Here.
Fire chief.
Here.
City engineer.
Here.
Role call complete.
Thank you. Citizens comments on agenda-related items. Limited to five minutes. Funny. A consent agenda. All items marked with an asterisk are considered by the city manager to be routine matters. Prior to approval, any member of council may have an item removed and taken up during the regular portion of the meeting. Items include approval of minutes, payroll invoices, consideration of tight lines for troops, charity, veterans event to be held on May 16th and 17th of 2025, consideration of proclaiming February 19th through the 15th, 2025, as National Future Business Leaders of America Week in the City of Manistee. At this time, council could take action to approve the consent agenda as presented. Is there a motion?
I would make a motion.
I would like to make a motion to remove from the consent agenda the 11425 study session minutes.
Do you need a motion to second that, Heather?
No, she can just remove them and then we'll motion and approve the agenda with those removed.
Okay, so is there a motion to approve the agenda with the removal?
I'll make her motion.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Heather, would you please take role?
Councilmember Raditz.
Nay.
Mayor Protem Smith.
Nope.
Councilmember Lasky.
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan.
No.
Councilmember Keck.
No.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Ruzga.
Yes.
Motion failed. So. So none of it.
So the consent?
Was it for the minutes or for the consent?
Well, that was for the consent with the minutes removed.
So do you want me to make another? Do you want me to read it again? How do you want me to do that?
I don't ever have that happen before.
So I think she's allowed to remove the minutes and then discuss why.
Okay.
So. That was.
So the agenda's not approved.
So the, that was, so with that, the consent agenda was not approved.
Okay, so you do, tell me to keep going?
I'm, I'm almost, maybe I'm wrong, but maybe there was a misunderstanding. You, you don't want all these things that, the approval of the other minutes with the study session removed, the payroll, the invoices, you don't want, you know, consideration of the tight lines for troops?
So we'll be discussing your.
Only one.
So this was, the motion in second was to approve the consent agenda with the removal of the minutes. So you were, so that vote was to approve everything else without the minutes.
Discuss why we removed the minutes?
That would come up next.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
So.
I think redo that. I think it's a miscommunication.
Okay. I agree. Okay, so you want to re.
Please. I'll make the motion to.
So do we want to start over with, so we have, I'll read the motion again.
Okay.
Okay, so we have a motion by Grabowski, second by Ruzga, to approve the consent agenda with the removal of the January 14th study session. So you're approving everything. We're just not, we're removing those and you'll discuss those minutes later.
Excellent.
Okay, so I'm going to take a, a role call again on that, okay? Councilmember Raditz.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Lasky.
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Keck.
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Ruzga.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Okay, so approval of minutes of the January 7th, 2025, regular meeting and closed session and the January 14th, 2025, study session.
So now you're, but you approved all the other minutes. You're just discussing the January 14th study session.
Okay. And not the closed session.
So you're just doing, the January 14th study session was the only thing that was removed.
Is there a motion?
But can we discuss that?
After the motion.
Yep.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion in second, then we have discussion.
Yep, I'll make, I'll make the motion to discuss.
I'll support.
Okay, discussion.
Who was the support? I'm sorry?
Russ.
Okay, thank you.
Or I'm sorry, Ms. Lasky.
Okay.
So the reason why I requested the removal, the, the study session item said, discuss the proceeds of the land sale, and we did that, but yet in the minutes, it didn't reflect that. So I was hoping that we add a sentence that says, "Council provided input regarding possible future use of land sale proceeds." I mean, we had a lengthy discussion. There was several members who said it, but, you know, it's just adding the sentence to reflect fully what happened, I guess. And so that's why I asked for it to be changed. I guess, you know, I don't, if anybody else, if anybody wants to know why I was thinking that, I don't know what else, I mean, I could probably, but that was my thought.
Do you want to discuss how you take minutes?
Um, well, I looked at the minutes, um, because I wasn't the one taking the minutes. So I, I watched the uh, meeting back and, um, our minutes, we do as little.
Yes.
Um, we, we do a consensus, you know, a consolidation.
Typical.
Um, and basically when she put that there was a discussion.
Yes.
Which discussion to me means input on both sides. So there was, there was discussion on both sides. So Mr. Gamble led the discussion and with council. So that, that led that there was discussion on both sides. How I see a study session is that a, a study session is an opportunity for all members of council to express their ideas and have a free, a free, open discussion and not have to have, um, every idea that they bring up put down on paper. Um, there was no general consensus from council that I heard in that meeting. So basically, all that was, was a discussion. There was nothing that was brought forth. There was no direction given to staff, um, on that, that you wanted us to do further. So basically, what she said was that there was just a, a discussion and that is what happened. So, um, I back her minutes. Um, but if, if it is the decision of council that you want something else added, you know, that, this is how we do it in, in open forum. If, if there is additional information that you would like added, but minutes are, um, the reflection of how the clerk or deputy clerk, what our take is on that meeting. And from our training, less is more.
Yep, absolutely.
Um, and in a meeting like tonight, it's action only, um, and that's what we put in those minutes. Anybody who wants to come to a meeting and hear everything that is said can come to the meeting or watch that video recording of the meeting.
I guess, and I agree with you 100%, except for the agenda stated, city property sale proceeds discussion. Yet the minutes only say that Mr. Gamble stated, "We didn't sell the land we had hoped to sell." It doesn't reflect, "We actually followed the agenda." That's, was my concern. You know, maybe I'm wrong, but.
I believe it stated that Mr. Gamble led the discussion on the proceed, or on the sale of the property.
Upcoming sales, on the upcoming sales of city-owned property. And it kind of digressed, I, I, Laney, it kind of digressed, like you just said, to the proceeds of the sale. We had talked about what to do with the, you know, currently it's in the street fund, what to do with the proceeds. And I think this sentence, and I think you, it says that led the discussion about the upcoming sales within, not the discussion of the proceeds. I think that was the only. That, that's the difference.
It's one and the same. You're splitting hairs. Upcoming sales proceeds and we, we, it was not an actionable item.
No. Upcoming proceeds means like the proceeds.
Of the sale.
Yeah, but right now, it's to go to the street fund and there was discussion.
It was not actionable. It was a discussion, which we had that discussion.
Yeah, and there, because there was no, there was no consensus made, so it was strictly just a discussion.
Exactly.
So, I mean, if you could put something, if you wanted something else in there, if you, if you guys agree that there was more said that you want added, but there was no dis, there was no consensus at that. It was strictly a, a study session discussion.
Right. The whole agenda is just a discussion. I guess I'm not.
And if a consensus was made, so if there was, I, there, I would have added, so if they were my minutes and a consensus was made by council, if you would have directed staff to do something, I would have put in bullet points that led to that consensus. But since there was no consensus, that was delivered.
Would you mind reading that sentence, the minutes you sent us, that, under discussion items?
Under.
You know, the, because right.
That I sent you?
Yeah, the minutes for approval, the draft minutes. I guess I can look it up.
Was it an email that I, was it the correspondence that I sent you?
Well, it was in the board packet.
Oh, yeah. So it says here, "For city property sale proceeds discussion," Laura wrote, "City manager William Gamble led the discussion about upcoming sales of city-owned property." And this is, "Mr. Gamble reported the sales of two Renaissance Park lots have not yet closed, and the buyer of the Sixth Avenue property has backed out of the sale."
Okay, okay. I guess that would probably cover it.
Is there something underlying here you're getting at?
Well, it just seemed odd to me that it wasn't, the title of the item was "Property Seeds Discussion," and it just says, "He led the discussion." It doesn't say more than that. And the sentence I.
Discussion indicates that we all spoke, or those that wanted to speak spoke, just by saying he led the discussion. Am I wrong?
No, it's just like at the end of the, end of the meeting when councilman, council member comments, so, so-and-so spoke, so-and-so spoke, so-and-so spoke. They don't list out everything. So I, I guess I'm just looking at, trying to figure out what, what do you think is missing or is being hidden?
Or what your concern is.
Yes.
I thought I stated that, is I didn't feel that 100% reflected that was.
Okay, are you satisfied with it now that we threw it around a little bit?
I feel better.
Okay.
Yeah.
I think we didn't discuss what, where the money went because the sale got dropped. That's why we didn't go any further.
Are we?
No.
I can't, I couldn't hear you, Councilmember Grabowski. What did you say? I could not hear you.
Councilman Grabowski.
You speak in.
I couldn't hear what you said. I couldn't hear what you said?
Well, I just said that being the property you didn't sell, we didn't discuss that anymore than.
Right, in, in a, in a study session, we can't make a decision anyway. We can't vote on anything anyway.
And that was right.
Yeah, okay.
So. I'll take that back and make a motion to accept the study session minutes from 11425.
I think there's a motion on the table.
We already have, yeah, we already have that. So I just need to do a, a role call. Councilmember Raditz.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Smith.
Yes, please.
Councilmember Lasky.
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Keck.
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Ruzga.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Introduction of Jordan LaPointe firefighter.
Greetings, council. So today, I'm excited to welcome our new firefighter, Jordan LaPointe, to the Manistee Fire Department. Jordan comes to us with previous firefighting experience. He's a current member of the Air Force Reserves, and he recently just passed his paramedic exam and became a licensed paramedic with the city. Uh, also, one of the things is Jordan, his father is actually a retired firefighter with the City of Manistee, whom we still had his old winter coat in a back closet. Bet Jordan perfectly, and we didn't have to change the name on the back.
Oh, good.
So he's saving us money.
I was just gonna say, saving money already.
So he's off to a good start, and I'm sure he's going to serve our community well. Here's Jordan. Uh, just want to say thank you for giving me a chance to serve the community I grew up in and follow my father's footsteps, and I look forward to, look forward to exceeding all your expectations.
Thank you. Welcome.
Welcome.
Consideration of approving contract with the Michigan Department of Transportation, MDOT, to receive a Category F grant. The city has applied for and received a $375,000 Category F grant from the Transportation Economic Development Fund. The contact, the contract requires the city to administer and construct the project to MDOT standards and provide matching funds to complete the project. The scope of the work includes hot mixed asphalt, cold milling and paving along First Street from US 31 to Sibon Street, from First Street to Fifth Street, along Fifth Street, from Sibon Street to Ramsdale Street, and from Kosciusko Street, westerly approximately 170 feet, and along Kosciusko Street from Fifth Street to Eighth Street, including concrete curb ramps, shoulder widening, and permanent pavement markings, all together with the necessary related work. At this time, council could take action to approve the resolution and contract with MDOT Control Section EDF 51000, job number 220261CON, contract number 245519, and authorize Public Works Director Jeffrey McCooler to execute the agreement. Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
And I'll second.
Any discussion?
What are we going to do without our swimming pool at First and 31?
Well, that might not address all the issues and infection, um, but what doesn't get addressed with that will certainly be addressed by the reconstruction of 31. So this is really just grinding off the existing pavement and repaving it. We're fortunate that, um, we received a grant from MDOT to assist the city in that. And just like our study session discussion, this is just one of those tools and opportunities that we have to preserve, uh, an important part of our truck route, actually, so.
Excellent.
Does the city match 202,000? Is that, how much is on this one?
And we have that budgeted in the current fiscal year budget.
And so it'll take place this summer, right, coming up?
Yeah, this is, you go through a lot of steps with these with the state, but this step is, the council agrees to accept the grant in, in the conditions that we're going to spend it and execute the project within the state terms. Um, the design work is already underway. We'll, we'll design it, bid it, and my expectation is probably mid to late summer, we'll be under construction.
Anybody else? Heather, would you please take role?
Councilmember Raditz.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Lasky.
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Keck.
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Ruzga.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration of amending CP25 tax incentives policy. Council policy, CP25, was last edited in 1998. A comprehensive overhaul of the tax incentive framework has been completed, and the updated policy aligns with the city's current goals. These goals include a commitment to fostering sustainable economic growth and enhancing community assets. The current changes to CP25 will ensure that future incentives will prioritize projects that generate the greatest benefit to the city and its residents. At this time, council could take action to approve amending CP25 tax incentives policy. Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
I guess I just have a question regarding the score sheet. It was very nice, the whole policy update. I really liked it.
Thank you.
So there's no pass/fail on that score sheet?
Mm-hmm.
So how, you know, do you pass with 30 points? Do you pass with 50 points?
Yep, so, so that's a living document. The policy framework that we amended was really top priority in making sure that we understood project criteria and what the city's current priorities are. And then the application and score sheet were secondary to make a better, more functional process internally.
Right.
Um, the scorecard itself is still a working document. We've done a couple, uh, examples or test runs, putting old projects and current projects through that to see how they would score out. So coming up with those metrics as to what's our hard stop for, okay, anything under 70 points will not get any type of tax incentive, or maybe it will, but it will be limited in its length, rather than the full 12-year Oprah. It's only going to be a six-year Oprah. So that's a living document that's changing, and we're always open for feedback, especially with that application or scorecard. Um, so any feedback you have, we'll definitely listen to it and see how it fits within the dynamic of the application and scorecard. Any other questions?
Andrew, it looks like applying for other grants and things, so it's not overly complicated and seems to be collecting the right information to make the right decision. So thank you for your work on that.
Yep, and it was definitely a group effort. Ed Bradford and Bill Gamble were equal partners in that project, so.
Well, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. Heather, would you please take role?
Councilmember Raditz.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Lasky.
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Keck.
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Ruzga.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration of authorizing the submission of revitalization and placemaking RAP grant application for the River Street improvements and amending the fiscal year 2025 budget to allocate funds for this project. The MEDC is requesting grant applications for a RAP grant for place-based infrastructure projects. The grant application is due on January 30th, 2025, and requires at least a 50% match with a minimum grant award being 500,000 and a maximum grant of a million. The west end of the DDA's streetscape project estimated to be 1,390,000 is a recommended scope for this application. At this time, council could take action to authorize the submission of a revitalization and placemaking grant application for River Streets Improvement contingent on DDA allocating remaining matching funds and amending the fiscal year 2025 budget to allocate 200,000 of the street funds, street funds for this project. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I will second that motion.
Is there a discussion?
Well, is that then, Jeff, you could probably best answer this, uh, does that change the others, that 200,000, or what, what, what's the city's commitment to this? And then, will that remove someone else who thought they were going to get their street done to, to move it to next year?
I think I understand your question. So in our transportation improvement plan, we had plugged in $550,000 to kind of match the streetscape efforts downtown, and that was to mill and fill, just like we talked about with the last project, from Division Street down to Spruce Street. So that's, was programmed out for the same year that this project would be planned for. So the 200,000 would be a portion of that because we're doing a smaller portion of, of the streetscape. So I don't think it takes away from, am I correct?
Correct.
It doesn't take away from any other project because we already have it programmed.
Okay.
Um, and then the block between US 31 and Division Street, we have separate plans to include brownfield funds to coincide with the gateway to upgrade that portion as well.
So.
So it's not an add-on. It's kind of in place of.
And do you know how much, you know, between 500 and a million? So, but then we have to match whatever we get, correct?
Right.
So if we.
If I may, so I think you'll see the budget on the screen. So it's a 50% match is the way we're doing this. So we're attempting to double the money the city's contributing to and also the DDA. So we'd get a, we'd put in 695,000 towards the project, and the grant would be for 695,000. So we're trying to leverage the budgeted funds from 2026 to double the money towards this project. So that's, that's the idea. And just want to mention that I've been working with Andrew and Lucas from Spicer, but Andrew and I have been talking since December about how we could position the city and DDA to apply for this. Um, it's an opportunity that doesn't come around too often to, um, be, to have a grant that can help match a streetscape project. So we want to take advan, put ourselves in a position to take advantage of this.
One, one of the things I wasn't sure of, the, the grant application, when I looked over some of the information we received, it showed an option one and an option two.
So I included the grant application. We're still, it's due the 30th, so we're kind of working through that. But yeah, there's kind of a placemaking one and also leave a place-based infrastructure. And then a facade. Is that kind of what you're looking at there? So there's, we're going for the placemaking, place-based infrastructure one.
Okay.
Does that make sense? So yeah, there's a couple different RAP grants, but we're going for the place-based infrastructure one.
So. One of the things from the information showed like an amphitheater area?
So I would just mention, so this, this is in, we're kind of using some elements from that Manistee, that streetscape corridor study. So this is our, it was finalized in February 2024. But basically, it talks about, and actually documents back in the original streetscape back in late 90s, early 2000s, talks about making this more of a, kind of a public area. Um, a couple of the elements here are the bump outs to help traffic calming, and then we're not doing everything that's in here, but we're taking some aspects of it. Um, we've kind of kept the parking, but you're right. Just, they were talking about different ways to make it more friendly for community events. And that's what makes this kind of applicable to this grant. And if you look at this, I'm sorry for moving around so much, but the idea, we actually applied for our shared spaces, Streets and Spaces grant for this portion over here. We kind of, we kept the parking by doing the diagonal. Um, this is the finale area for the sleigh bell. This is where Hops and Praps was. This is where Thoroughbred Boat, um, event area was. It actually aligns with the Marina's strategic plan to incorporate more with the downtown. Uh, the outsider, we've been requesting a letter of support. So kind of worked with the neighboring properties, and they want to see that those properties are going to, um, actually use that area as well.
So, so then I under, I guess I'm, I mean, I, I have to say, I think it's a fine idea. I don't disagree with it. I'm just curious what I'm agreeing with. Um, so I guess my one thing that I wanted to ask about was, if there is an amphitheater, was there any thought given to making it a accessible switchback area and incorporating both amphitheater and switchback into the design? It might help the grant look more successful, too, if we can provide accessibility. But I'm not kidding that that's a done deal, yeah.
Um, so the amphithe, so really, a lot of this is curbless, um, kind of making the transitions a little nicer here. The amphitheater is not part of this.
Okay.
Um, it's bump outs, it's redoing kind of sidewalk with the trip hazards with curbless elements. And then we are going to have that new switchback with the EDA grant over here. So between the, the butterfly garden areas. So there are those elements, but that's not part of this. The, the scope of the project is basically the streetscape where you have this, this budget here.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else? Heather, would you please take role?
Councilmember Raditz.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Lasky.
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Keck.
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Ruzga.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration of authorizing concession air agreement with the Sabalpoint Lighthouse Keepers Association, SPLKA, for the management of the Manistee North Pierhead Lighthouse. The city took ownership of the Manistee North Pierhead Lighthouse in 2011 with the Manistee County Historical Museum as the concessionaire. The museum was contracted by SPLKA regarding potential operations at the lighthouse. After discussion with the museum and the city council in January of 2024, the city began working with SPLKA to reach an agreement to make SPLKA the concessionaire, then anticipate commencing limited operations this summer, full operations next summer, and will be positioned to celebrate the lighthouse's 100-year anniversary in 2027. At this time, council could take, could authorize the concession, concessionaire agreement to, with Sabalpoint Lighthouse Keepers Association for management of the Manistee North Pierhead Lighthouse. Is there a motion?
I will make that motion.
Is there a second?
I would like to second.
Any discussion?
I think it's just fantastic. I am very, very excited. It's going to be another, another real, I hate to say gem, because I always say it's a gem, it's a gem, but another, very happy to see this come to fruition. Good job by everybody working on this. Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
I agree.
I got a couple of questions.
Yes.
I have, I, and I just haven't seen him probably. Most lighthouses have a house that the person stays in. And I kind of read, you know, are we supposed to then pay for them to stay in Manistee? Or are you planning on using Manistee people rather than having a cost to the city to house the people? Because like old Mission, those people pay $200 to stay in the, to stay in that lighthouse. And I know, Bethy, you know more than I do on these, but ours is a little bit unique that we don't have a house to house the keeper.
Correct. Yeah, thank you for that question. It is in the concession agreement that there is $15,000 coming from the city at an annual basis to provide a lodging site for volunteers. It is a requirement by, by SPLKA that we need to have at no cost housing agreement with whatever stakeholder we're working with. This is very similar to the Ludington North Breakwater Light. For that, we do actually have a residence in the Ludington State Park. It's an old ranger station that is provided to Sabal Point Lighthouse Keepers Association at no cost. They're, they're even more at Little Sabal Point. The residence is no longer at that site as well. It is a pedestal essentially in itself. Similar feature down there, there is a ranger station, a ranger house that is being utilized for that. Unfortunately, in the city of Manistee, the, the state park here does not have a ranger station that we can utilize. That's why we've asked the city to provide $15,000 annually to provide that housing at no cost to SPLKA.
One other thing, I think if we have that housing, that's quite a bit of money to pay someone to come to Manistee out of ours. But I think we'd want to make sure, just our city wants to make sure that we're very transparent in that that's bid out, not just, because that's for three months, that's quite a bit of money, or three and a half, whatever it is to. So I think we want to make, whether you have an IRP or someone submits something to get promos, proposals to rent their Airbnb or whatever that.
If I may, there, there is language in the concessionaire agreement that's up to that amount, and it's supposed to be providing backup about some competitive things looked at and so.
I am a renter here in the city of Manistee as well, and so I know what rent is going for, especially for Airbnbs. It's the time, those three months out of the summer, we know that's a heavy tourist time. We were, if we were to take away that from an Airbnb, it might be hard for them to concession, to have that rental for the rest of the period of time. As we know, you know, June, July, and August are the time to make hay, as far as for tourism go, so.
Just long as it's put out for proposals, I think. Then the other question, I've never been in the lighthouse. Is it customer-ready to have tours and stuff?
It is not, no. So I would like to paraphrase that, that paragraph as well. Limited hours this summer with full operations next summer is how it's currently worded. We do need a year to do some restoration work interior. With this site, there is a, called a historical structure report that has been completed. This is like the holy grail of documents essentially for an historical site, in that there's wordings about adding a handlebars or handle railings to the interior of that lighthouse. Right now, it's more of a ladder system, so adding that, those handles in a certain manner, it's important. So we can't just go out there and take a welder and weld these items on. It has to be a clamping system. That is a requirement from National Park Services, which is an entity we have to report to as far as whatever we do out that site for restoration work.
So would we have innkeepers coming this summer, or would this summer primarily be getting it ready?
This summer would be a prep summer.
Okay, so we went to have the $15,000, probably not to have to budget that this year for that?
That would start in '26. Yep, that would start in '26.
Okay.
But I think to be fair, this is, these are questions that have been answered in previous councils, so that's, you're asking very, very good questions, so I appreciate that. But it's like, that's, oh yeah, they don't know that because they weren't here for that.
Yeah, and I don't know if everybody else knows.
No, absolutely. From prior meetings, if they watched, they did. Thank you.
I just want to mention that as, because I knew I didn't know anything about this, so I went back and feuded the 1-924 meeting, so I could learn a little bit about this proposal. And one of the things mentioned, it was there was a bus turnaround available, and that you do trips. But this community also has a historic car figuring that would be, I mean, there might be some partnership you could do there, because they also rent rooms. And.
So.
Yeah.
Yes, we did talk with them. So our keepers do come in from all over the country, 22 states. They, right now, they are very much accustomed to having a kitchen, kitchenette, kitchen space, where they can prep their own food. Asking them to provide their own, you know, going out to eat every single night for seven days out of that week is, is quite more out of their pocket. Additionally, I would like to say, thank you for bringing up that meeting, in that we also state that we are open up six days a week. We are moving as an organization to seven-day-a-week program that is starting this year in 2025 at all of our other sites. So when we do open up here in Manistee, that seven-day-a-week program will be brought up to here as well. We then switch over to a fall schedule. This year will be on September 7th. It will go into a four-day-a-week schedule, so starting actually on September 11th, so it'll be Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. But starting in May through that September timeframe, we are moving to a seven-day-a-week program.
Anybody else have any questions?
He has a presentation, if you'd like him to go through.
Oh, yes.
If you'd like to, yeah. Okay. So Sabal Point Lighthouse Keepers Association, or SPLKA, it's a little bit easier to say sometimes. I wanted to introduce myself a little bit as well. I'm the executive director for the organization for the past two years, but I do have seven years of experience as an executive director for an historical entity. 16 years with nonprofits, 31 years sailing Lake Michigan, both competitively and for leisure. Lifelong resident for West Michigan and a current resident of Manistee. I do have some family ties to the area. Phyllis Greavy was my grandmother. She lived on Fifth Avenue for over 70 years. My grandfather, Lieutenant John Greavy, was also a Manistee Police Department. He was a lieutenant for the police department. SPLKA is an entity with four locations currently to preserve, promote, and educate the public and give access to all. Four locations are currently Big Sabal, Ludington North Breakwater, Little Sabal, and White River Light Station. I did put our dates of when they became part of our mission focus as well, starting in '87, moving to '04 for Little Sabal, Breakwater '06, and 2012 was our most recent acquisition as far as a location. So we're about 13 years now, we've been going strong with four. As far as preservations, I did mention the historical structure reports as being the, the document that we need to have for these sites. Manistee North Pierlight does have that completed already, which is a huge bonus for, for this preservation movement. We do have working relationships with the State Historic Preservation Office, or SHIPO, with National Park Services, DNR for the Two Towers for Big and Little Sabal, and of course, with Fruitland Township in the City of Ludington. Whenever we do anything major at any of these sites, we do bring that back in front of the stakeholders to make sure there's approval by the stakeholders. Even more so, we do a report, end-of-year report, and beginning report for that coming year. So there's no surprise about what we're up to or what we're doing. We have an official report that comes to those, those entities. As far as promotion, I mentioned that seven-day-a-week program is coming up here, as well as going to that fall four-day-a-week schedule. We are over 200 active volunteers throughout the 22 states. They are coming in because they, they have a passion for lighthouses. They have a passion for West Michigan, or they have a passion for maritime history, are typically the three things. They are a big promoter, both here locally while they're on their tour and back home. So we have individuals from California that come in that are promoting SPLKA in California. They're promoting the lighthouses in the areas in different states as well. As an organization, we have the privilege to do some major celebrations here in the next few years. Last year, we had the 100th anniversary of the Ludington North Breakwater Light. We celebrated that one with a laser light show that corresponded with music for a couple thousand guests to enjoy from the shoreline. Little Sabal, we are held to certain restrictions from the DNR, but we had a family-friendly, open-house style and event. So still very, very active there. This year, we're celebrating on June 21st, White River Light Station's 150th celebration. Still working out some information there, but there's going to be entertainment, live entertainment there, maybe a pig roast, some beer and wine, as well with the entertainment. So kids-friendly activities on top of all of that. To educate, we focus on education as well. Group tours, we do give out group tour rates to local senior, senior groups, to anybody that would like to come in as a group entity. They just have to reach out to us two weeks in advance. Our volunteers, I'll speak very heavily on them, typically they're retired teachers, and they, they have a deep passion for each site. So they educate very well through, through our guest, guest programs. Additionally, field trips, we do offer free tours for field trips. Once again, as long as they give out two-week notice, then we allow them to come through at no cost. Cost typically for an adult is $8. For a student that's 17 and under is $5. That's to help cover operational and restoration expenses. Accessibility is a huge component. For Big Sabal, we do offer busing, bus days. That is eliminating that four-mile hike to and from Big Sabal. Certainly with the turnaround lot here with the accessibility of additional parking, people will be, will be able to promote bus tours, bus trips to, to Manistee as well. Service animals is a policy added last summer. We currently allow service animals to any main floor space, public space for any of our buildings. That is, with the exception of Ludington North Breakwater, where animals are not allowed on the pierhead, but service animals tend to have some priorities over that. Educational books, or activity books, we do offer free activity books for all students that comes through our threshold. That one's a little bit older copy that, that's actually my coworker's daughter there. She's now in college. There's, all four of those are listed on that booklet. I've separated those out and made them into half sizes, a little bit easier for kids to handle. They don't have to be in mom or mom's purse or dad's backpack. They can be in their hand instead. And they're individualized for each location. So there'd be a booklet made just for Manistee, and they would receive that at that time. New item that we're adding as well is live cameras, live cam feeds to our lighthouses. Currently, if you go to our website, go to White River Light Stations, scroll down to the bottom of the page, you can see the live camera. And right now, it's very dark, it'd be reflective. But certainly during the daytime, that's the kind of view you see from, from White River Light Station. We're not going to be adding elevators to our towers or to our lighthouses. What's the next best thing? Adding that live stream. Therefore, people can access that from, from down on the main level, from home, from across the country, from anywhere they would like. Really nice for people that move away as well, or for boaters, people wanting to see the wave action, or for people that would like to see their hometown again. I went one too far. Nope, okay. So why is, why is SPLKA interested? I wanted to bring up these components as well. This is mission-focused. We are preserving more lighthouses in the state of Michigan. This is absolutely mission-focused. Additionally, we have additional coverage into a fourth county, exposure to additional donor base. We do have a growing volunteer program currently. We have a waitlist this year for our lighthouses to be in our program. So the fact that we are promoting it that well for different states and different regions, and have a waitlist, that is a big thing for us. So adding another structure is an important feature. Opportunity to rebrand. Sabal Point Lighthouse Keepers Association is a really big name. Additionally, our logo is only one structure. It's Big Sabal. I would like to see that change a little bit. Us being beyond the Sabal Points, it has the opportunity for a rebranding for the organization as well. We are currently four, potentially five locations out of 129 lighthouses in the state. State of Michigan has the most lighthouses than any other state in our country. Furthermore, 779 lighthouses in the country. We have the most lighthouses than any other country in the world. We see visitors coming in from all over the world to see our locations currently. For the benefits to the city of Manistee, in your article, I believe from last year, I put estimated 5,000 tours per year. I upped that a little bit to 5,500 because of that seven-day-a-week program. We could see more than that, but time will tell. Do have operational hours in '26. It may not be in May. We'll see how things go. We're a little bit delayed as far as when this approval happened, just because of insurance. We had to figure out the right insurance policy for this. We had to figure out the right housing for this, or potential housing for this before we got involved. But certainly, full operational hours in '27 is a must-have. That is the anniversary year, 100-year anniversary for the Manistee North Pierlight. Additionally, SPLKA does come with experience and contacts. We have good working relationships with both SHIPO and National Park Services. We have a volunteer base. We have a seasonal schedule that has been working for quite some time now. Of course, there's the anniversary year in '27, and a future live camera feed that I'd love to bring to this tower. That's, again, mission-focused. We focus on regular hours of operation, keeping the integrity of our locations, educating all ages, giving opportunities for our volunteers, equal engagement with both state and local communities, and equal stakeholder benefits as well. That's what I have for this presentation today. But just want to, again, give a little bit more of a background to SPLKA, what we've been up to in the last, you know, 40 years, and share this with Manistee as well. Manistee is where my family is from. Growing up on Fifth Avenue, visiting my grandma, you know, Fifth Avenue Beach is my, my place where I remember a lot of, a lot of fond memories. So I would like to see those open as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Heather, would you please take role?
Councilmember Raditz.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Lasky.
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Keck.
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Resga.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, now we will have a report from Mr. John Helgey and the Tree Commission.
Well, good evening, everybody.
Hello.
Thank you. And I've got, I'm going to start off with an apology. I apologize for not talking to city council in 2024. We just couldn't fit it in. We were busy, and you're going to see why in a few minutes. So I'm John Helgey, and I have the honor of being the chair of the Tree Commission for the city of Manistee. And we're very excited about what we're going to be able to tell you, and if I can figure out how to work this thing.
The down.
Down arrow.
Down?
Yeah.
Okay. So we meet on the second Monday of the month, in March through October, and at 5 o'clock right here in this room. And again, we're responsible for, in other words, we're responsible for the health, safety, and the general welfare of our vegetation on city-owned property in the city of Manistee. I'm really happy to report that we're at full capacity, authorized capacity as far as people involved. I'm very happy to have a couple of members with me tonight. First of all, I want to recognize Jerry Haw. Jerry Haw has been on this commission forever. And he was here when I got here, and he will be here long after I leave, I expect. Vitor Larum is also here. And Vitor's relatively new, but you'll hear in a few minutes, Vitor's doing a great job and doing some really expressive things. Want to highlight the Sarah Stevenson, Nick Lacina, and David Blair. Is David here?
David, right there, yes.
David is one of the three that had just joined us this year. So again, we're really pleased that we're at, we're at full strength. Now, I want to tell you a little bit about what we've been doing. First and foremost, we are now a tree city. We have been recognized by the Arbor Foundation as a Tree City USA. We accomplished that in 2024. And we have applied for our 2025 authorization. It's been approved by the state and is in the hands of the Arbor Day Foundation right now. Typically, the Arbor Day Foundation approves this once the state coordinator approves it. So I'm very excited, and we'll be getting that word here very, very shortly. And again, we will have another Arbor Day celebration that will come up in April, and again, publicize this. So again, we did a lot of good things. We also received a $3,000 grant from Consumers Energy. That enabled us to plant 15 trees along 8th Street in Maxwell Town. Okay? And again, I want to give Vitor credit for this. Vitor is heading up our grant work and grant coordination. Vitor really did a great job on this one, because we submitted, and they came back and said, you know, those trees that you're saying you want to plant, those may not work because they're going to get up into, into the power lines. So we went right back, redid it, and we did receive the grant. So that's, that's a good work. And again, there's a lot of good work been going on. But I really want to highlight this one. We're bringing a grant for $224,300 to the city of Manistee. We're bringing a grant for $224,300 to the city of Manistee. Okay? And we're doing this in collaboration with the Manistee Conservation District. What you see on your screen there in front of you is just an excerpt from the news release, the press release that announced this. Again, part of the highlights I want to make here is we started doing a tree inventory of the city about 18 months ago, and Sam Coram, who is another member, was heading up that project. And we're making progress. We're getting great help from the high school students, and they were doing a great job. And what they're doing is we're using our cell phones and going around and identifying the trees and putting that right into your GIS system for the city. So again, we were making progress on that, but it was going slow, and we were kind of struggling. How are we going to continue this on? Well, we collaborated, again, Vider got with the Manistee Conservation District, and they've got a real ball of fire there, a guy named Tyler Dula. And Tyler put this grant application together, but we had a base, a foundation here with what we have been doing that enabled us to win this significant grant. Now, this grant is going to be focused on what we're going to be doing in 2025. So again, we're going to be focused on meeting the activities and timelines that you see in front of you here in 2025, on top of what we've always done, okay, as the Tree Commission. But right now, we've got some good ideas going on and good things to do. Couple of things here I just want to highlight for you. I hate acronyms, UFMP, Urban Forestry Management Plan, Urban Forestry Management Plan. We are going to be able to contract with a professional organization that's going to come in, and they're going to finish this tree inventory. They're going to finish inventorying the trees, the over 7,500 trees that are on city property right now. We will know their species, we will know their condition, and that will all be uploaded into our GIS system and allow us to track these trees, you know, forever. Again, the other thing they're going to be doing is they're going to be doing tree risk assessments for us, professional tree risk assessments. So we'll know the trees that need to be removed ahead of time, that need to be pruned, how they should be pruned. So again, that's going to start right here, probably in March or April, and go through June. But we're going to have folks here working to do this. And then, once we have this plan in place, what will happen then, probably into 2026, is we're going to start, you know, replanting trees. We've got the ability with this grant to replant on a two-to-one basis for everyone we remove, plus catch up a little bit on all the trees that we have removed over the last few years. So again, I'm excited about it, but I just want to share with you, we've got it down in writing, kind of holding ourselves accountable to what we're going to be doing. So it's going to start off, what does the Tree Commission do? We're going to start holding community workshops and public meetings. We're going to do a lot better job utilizing the resources from the Conservation District. They've got a fellow there, Josh Shields, who is, he's got his PhD in forestry, but he is absolutely focused on urban forest development. He is a certified arborist, and he's been a great help to us already. So again, you're going to see us doing a little bit more community outreach. Along those lines, we're going to look for neighborhood advisory boards. Those of you on the council who are representing the north of the river and Maxwell Town, we want your advice on who we should recruit to be on these neighborhood advisory councils, okay? Because we don't want to just make decisions up here in this room. We want the community involved. So we hope to get going on that very soon. Again, we're going to ask our citizens to tree monitor. You know, they're already doing a pretty good job of that right now, but again, we want the public to be involved. We're going to reach out to the schools. We're going to ask the schools, especially, hopefully, Councilmember Raditz, who we're going to, we're going to reach out to the elementary schools and get them engaged with us, you know, adopting a tree or two, okay? And then, again, we're going to continue with our public awareness campaign. We have an awareness campaign right now. We call it Manistee, Plant a Tree, and we're going to continue with that, but we're going to build upon it and make it even better. Now, what is the Manistee Conservation District going to do? By the way, just so you know, again, full transparency, the Manistee Conservation District will take up 10% of this grant because they are the administrators, okay? So we're going to have about $200,000 to work with here in the city, but again, our friends at the Manistee Conservation District are going to be doing a lot of the heavy lifting as far as administering this, and again, guiding us. So again, they're going to be managing the program. It's very important that we collaborate and communicate with the Conservation District. And I'll tell you right now, Vider's done a fantastic job, and they're very open with us, and I'm very excited about what we've got going on. Again, we're going to be continuously in contact with them, looking for best practices, looking for, you know, what do other folks do? And they've got a great pipeline of information like that coming to us. Here is our Manistee Planetree. This is up right now on the city website. One of the things I'm excited about, and Jerry Haw is heading up, we're going to be adding some species of trees to this. Right now, you see you have three species you can choose from, and for $50 as a landowner here, a resident in Manistee, you can have a tree planted, you know, in the front, in the space between the sidewalk and the curb. That's city-owned property. We will put trees in, as you see in the pictures here. They come with, they're planted, the holes dug, the trees put in, and then the watering bags are put there and they're staked out. So again, all we ask the property owner to do with, on top of donating that $50, is to keep those trees watered, because watering those trees for the first two years they're in the ground is really, really important. But we're going to add to this with trees that are, number one, not invasive, are native to Michigan, and will last for a lifetime here in our part of the world.
John, do you consider any pipes?
Pardon?
Consider any pipes underneath the?
Well, one of the things that we do before you dig any holes, Miss Dig comes in and identifies all of the utilities that could be in place, okay? So I've shared with you about our vision for, you know, what we call a resilient urban forest here in Manistee, and you probably ask me, what do we need to succeed? Well, we're going to continue to collaborate with the Manistee Conservation District. We need continued support from the Manistee Department of Public Works, and I will tell you, they are doing an outstanding job. You know, they take care of our trees, they take care of everything, but what we're really trying to do is use more resources other than totally depending on, you know, our guys at the DPW. But one of the things we're going to do is we're going to train them how to maybe better prune, how to identify problem areas. So again, part of this grant is going to help that. And last but not least, collaborating with the Parks Commission because the Parks Commission has a lot of trees in the parks. We have, I believe, and you can correct me, Liz, if I'm wrong, but over 180 acres of park in this community. That's a lot of park, and that's a lot of trees. So again, we want to work very closely with the Parks Commission and not have any surprises, okay? So with that, I'm done. Are there any questions from you?
John, have they decided if they're going to plant any on 12th Street since they renewed the street? There's no trees going from Cypress down to, Cypress comes up by Landmark Garage and then goes down to US 31. There's no trees along that at all.
I understand, right now, that's not falling under this grant itself. It is a challenge there to trees because, again, property owners, you know, we don't have the frontage, like you have houses along 12th Street there by the high schools, I'm assuming you're talking about?
Well, that and then over by Catholic Central.
Okay. Well, again, we'll certainly be open to that and the Manistee Planetree option, which, again, by the way, that $50, that doesn't cover the almost $400 that it costs.
Oh, I know.
That money comes out of Jeff's budget, you know, so he's very careful with his budget. He's very tight to the vest with it, as he should be. Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, now we'll have a Ramsdale discussion. Laura Ortiz-Labelle of the RRCA Executive Director, or Nancy Ferguson.
Hi, I'm not Laura. I'm Nancy Ferguson. As the current Board President at the RRCA and as one of the founding members, we thought that maybe I would be the one who'd be easiest to address the issues of the lease with the Ramsdale. Laura hasn't been here through all of those processes. She is here, however, so if we have questions for Laura, she's here. I also have Bill Connor here, our treasurer, so if we have to go deep into any numbers, he's present. And I have Steve Grocock. Oh, moved to the front because he's going to be my tech man. Theater people, we could never do well without tech men behind us. I wanted to start with a little bit of the history, where we came from, what we're doing, what got us here. To start, since the city took ownership of the Ramsdale was in 1953, there've been several different management structures, several bites at the apple to try to manage this facility, which has been a challenge since it was built. It can go back in history. In 2015, several citizens, including myself, volunteered to create the RRCA, a 501(c)(3) nonprofit that would operate the Ramsdale, officially taking the reins in July of 2016. We were optimistic, ambitious, a little too ambitious. Over the years, we took the mandate that the city seriously and developed a fully functioning community arts center. If you've been in, I think you can appreciate some of the work that has gone into that. We have increased our audience, improved programming, and managed the operation with fiscal responsibility. In addition, the RRCA has made numerous improvements to the Ramsdale in the last nine years. Valued approximately $350,000, that if you took the stipend that you have been allotting to us, you get roughly 80 cents on the dollar back in building improvements, and they have been significant. I think you have that list as part of your packet. If you haven't looked at it, please do, because there have been many, many things accomplished on behalf of the city and its citizens who now own all of that. As recognized in the lease agreement, it's on Section 7A, venues like the Ramsdale are not likely to ever be self-sufficient sadly, and will likely require subsidization, subsid- subsidization, thank you, to meet operation expenses. This has been a truth for the Ramsdale Theater since it opened its doors in 1903. It is also a truth for us and for other venues that we network with. It is not unique to us. To become fully self-sustaining is a goal we have not been able to meet. It was in our original plan, but we haven't made it there. As donations and grants have shown decline, and the maintenance and repair costs continue to climb, the RRCA has reached a point where it projects it will not be able to meet its financial obligations by later of this year. What we're asking is for the city to resume financial responsibility for the utilities, repairs, and structural maintenance. We would continue the day-to-day housekeeping maintenance of the building. These costs have averaged about $75,000 over the last five years. Prior to the RRCA, the responsibilities for utilities, maintenance, and repair have been borne by the city of Manistee, also with significant financial support for whoever operated the building. Utilities, maintenance, and repairs are base costs that would continue to be incurred whether the building were to be operated by the city or mothballed and shuttered, which I would hate to see happen, because if it were shuttered without utilities, it would decay so quickly, like the old building, the old high school building. Bottom line is the RRCA loves the Ramsdale, has demonstrated sound management, and very much wants to continue in that role. However, we must find a solution to the financial shortfalls ahead. We'll continue to responsibly run programming and to care for the facilities if it were our own home. We know we operate out of a truly magnificent historic building, but it's also a very old building with repairs and costs beyond our ability to cover them. Let's look at some numbers. These are small, so bear with us. You see it divided really as you're going down from top to bottom, years where it was fully city-controlled and the years under the RRCA lease. To give you just an idea of what those city-controlled years were like, in 2006, the Ramsdale was run by the Ramsdale Governing Board, which was made up of different user groups in the building. It was a cumbersome structure, and it broke down after a year or two. 2007, I believe, or in the beginning of '08, the city of Manistee took it over as a department of the city. So it was the city employees who would go over and meet the brides and do that kind of work. I don't know if there were actual shows produced in that time. It's highly possible that the income under operating revenue was primarily rental, but that was pre-me. In 2010, '11, or '11, '12, the city contracted with Tom Girdam out of?
Saginaw.
Saginaw, who did a study on the potential for the Ramsdale, things that could be improved, a variety of recommendations. The city was very impressed with him, hired him to be their programming manager, and he did that part-time. I recall the printout and the programming he produced. It was very, very impressive. He was a, like I said, a part-time, did not live here, came in and would do that, and I think, and Ed can correct me if I'm wrong in anything, because he lived through all of those years, that there were some part-time people that actually were in the theater, and then there were city employees. 2013 and into '14, Mike Terry was hired by the city as a executive director for the building. There was a part-time maintenance worker as well, those were the employees, and he did run more programming. He, we, when we came in, Mike left. He didn't do the quantity of programming that we're currently doing. And you see, in 2017, we actually started in 2016. It was fiscal year 2017 when the lease was signed, so that's why we start officially there. You will notice that on the operating revenue that there is a huge bump in the amount because we were putting on lots of events. They were concerts, local rentals of the space, like the Manistee Civic Players or the Conservatory of Dance. There were original plays that we put on in that time, and we brought in a variety of musical genres. The tribute band seemed to be the most popular, but we did, we have done jazz, classical, and others. Blues, another very popular genre. But the cost of presenting those also goes up because it's expensive to do it. I think people come in sometimes into the theater and they see a packed house at a big event and imagine that money is just flowing through our fingers. The truth is, the cost to do those shows, when you've paid for the talent and the technical support and the marketing that's required, leaves a very slim profit margin. I don't know if any of you attended the Jimmy Buffett concert last summer. It was a big concert, quite the party at the theater, and it was packed. We had a lot of people there. The net proceeds of that show was a little over $4,000. The net proceeds of that show was a little over $4,000. You don't make a lot of money. You bring people through, the place is active. The money that we make is primarily from grants and fundraising. So the activity in the theater keeps it working. It's its purpose. But it doesn't pay all the bills. In the summertime, when we have three big events, we might make, if we're lucky, $12,000. That's a little over one month of payroll. So you see how the rest of the gap is there. There's a couple of years on here, 2020, 2023, where you see a large jump in income. Those are COVID years. And we were able to obtain a PPP loan or something, similar name, but it was an ability to continue to pay for people when activity was not going on. This time period is also interesting because we weren't running the kinds of utilities that we normally do. And shockingly, it wasn't that much of a savings. Just for your information. You'll notice that the percentage on the right column, you can see what percent of subsidy to expenses there were. Under city control, under, like I said, a variety of different management structures, you have between 60% to 105% provided by the city. That number drops off substantially. You get down into our numbers and you see the percentage. We've been able to hold our own. But if you look at net income, you'll see, don't look at the handoff here. Those numbers are a little skewed because they were a combination of two owners, two management teams, that they often were in negative numbers. Those numbers that we would raise money for float into the next year. We operate pretty much on a cash basis. The cash comes in, the bill comes in, we pay it. When we're left with that, there's more money coming in and then we pay those bills. It continues, but we do then end up a little bit behind. They accumulate. They're a bit cumulative. And you come down to this year and the projected, those numbers are coming a lot from our budget, some of it from actual tracking of how we're doing. But the potential is for a $75,000 negative number this year, which would force us to stop operation with what we're doing. We don't really want to go there. So that's why we've brought you this proposal, that we enter into a management agreement, which is essentially what we've been in already. Our lease has been a situation where we're not true tenants. We've been managing the facility for the city. We've been keeping the building in good shape. We have been the managers of it rather than the renters. Especially since we're a nonprofit, nothing comes back to us. I think that's what I needed to say on this one. Here we have just a visual of what I just said. The blue is revenue, green, operating expense. The red line that tracks through shows you the net income, which floats along. Some people are visual learners, so we have to have the double. In conclusion, before questions, I did a ton of reading before coming here and I read through all the old studies, which by the way are fascinating if you ever wanted to look at all the studies. There have been many on how to make this place click. And I also read all of the city budget narratives as this building was discussed. And there's one line from the narrative that really stood out to me, partially because it was in bold, in brackets, and a couple of them really big. But it speaks to the challenge of this building. This building was called Ramsdale's folly when it was built. The reason? Couldn't support it. It was way too elegant, way too lovely, way too wonderful for the small population that we're in. But it's there nonetheless and it's still glorious. So this was from the city budget narrative. "Therein lies the fundamental dilemma of the Ramsdale, an irreplaceable community asset that has widespread support but is not an essential government service and it requires heavy, ongoing taxpayer support." It is an albatross, but it's a lovely albatross, beloved by the community. So it is the struggle that we have been engaged with and we are in it all together. The city has done such good work for over 70 years to keep this irreplaceable community asset stable and functioning through all of the different incarnations of management teams that have tried. The RRCA is incredibly grateful for the city's major role in the theater's historic story and for giving us the opportunity to work with it. We hope to find a way to continue to work with the city, to continue to keep the Ramsdale the shining gem that it's always meant to be. I will try to take your questions right now and help you out and my team will help me out if I get stuck. I'm sure there are some. It's just who wants to go first?
Do you foresee any way to increase revenue?
We have been working that angle for all the years that we've been doing it. And yes, we have. Ticket prices have gone up. We try to stay beneath what the casino's charging. I mean, we look around and see what's there. We are very much in the ballpark. But we also can't overcharge because you hit a point and you eclipse your audience. They can't do it anymore.
Right.
We've done the same thing with concessions, which is something that if you saw on our list, was we changed state law to be able to sell wine and beer in the theater to get a license. That has opened up a major revenue stream and has really provided more income on our shows sometimes than the ticket sales themselves. We've raised the cost again on those, keeping them within line of what local bars do. We don't want to undercut anybody too much. We don't want to charge too much. And I think we've hit that ceiling as well. We continue to apply for grants. But as you've heard tonight, and you know well because you're the city and you've worked on so many of these, grants love projects, which is why we have that stellar number of building improvement dollars for you. Because we can apply for grants and win them for a new light board, for a new sound system, for new drapes on the stage. We cannot get a grant, it's very hard to get a grant, to underwrite operations, your personnel, your day-to-day. And we are people business. We are a service industry as well as technical. So it's our people that are the main investment that we make.
And I guess maybe I should have clarified that. I wasn't necessarily talking about ticket prices. You know, you're a 501(c)(3) nonprofit. You can only do so much. And I guess the question should have been, do you see a way to bring in more shows? Or are you guys kind of maxed out as far as what you can do without? We obviously don't want to drive you into the ground either.
Right. Again, that's kind of a vicious circle we've discovered. I mean, we've learned so much in this time. It is a vicious circle. We could do programming every weekend, for example. Let's be the vote and constantly have shows all the time. To do those, you need more personnel. So we, right now, are producing the max that we can on the staff that we have.
That's what I was asking.
We are heavily supported, also similar to the vote, with volunteers. We have many volunteers, very committed volunteers, like the lighthouse keepers. But they are there all the time, running the concessions, ushering, and so forth. We'd be lost without them. I guess did that answer your question? Sometimes I dread.
No, you can only do so much with what you have and that was what the question meant to be.
We push every limit and have been. We have a lot of potential coming up in this year. We have, how many rentals? We have about 20 building rentals, which is a huge increase over last year. That's been a personal goal of Laura's and she's really been working that angle. Many weddings, parties, so forth. There are lots of things percolating along with the regular schedule planning.
Thank you.
Any else have questions?
Questions, guys?
I have a couple of questions. Okay, so just to overview this, you want us to take over all of the maintenance, all of the utilities? We already do the accounts payable, accounts receivable, deposits, and then pay you a $50,000 management fee?
Yes.
Okay. And then my next question, so I have a little bit of a concern because I know when Councilmember Grabowski and I met with you last year or the year before, we had discussed putting a member of council on your board and we were supposed to get like updates every couple of months. We got a couple of them and then we didn't get any and then we just got one yesterday. So that's a little concerning. And it's also concerning that it was brought up that, you know, it's a tight-knit board, everybody volunteers, you know, and then I see that there's three different board members than there was when we previously talked. So I think going back to a year and a half ago, it would have been beneficial to have a council member on the board so we could see what was going on and not rely on a report every once in a while.
If I could answer that, we're in agreement. What we were concerned about, well, we had Ed Bradford on our board, who was a city representative. And we felt we were heavily connected. But we don't have Ed on the board now and we honestly do feel that that may be a good idea. Because I don't know that you know how much we do. And it's kind of hard to communicate that without somebody seeing. So we are not opposed to that. I did caution you that we are a very hard-working board. It's very rare to walk into the building and not find one of us there. There is never an event that happens without one of us working somewhere. So we are very committed with our time and financially. So we just wanted anybody to know that if you jump in, you're going to find us working hard. But I don't think it's a bad idea any longer and I guess I would like you to know what we do.
So my last question is, if we took over the building, all of the maintenance, all of the utilities?
The structural maintenance. We would continue. We have somebody who does all the cleaning. We have kept it in very good shape internally, that we would not stop that.
Okay, so then what would you be using the $50,000 for, just payroll?
Yes.
Okay.
And I think when you look at that, it sounded like a ton, and it is a ton, that you would be committing to it. So I'm not going to minimize that in any way. But if you were to look at what the city would be paying under this now, would be committing financially, it still would be roughly 25% of, when we looked at that slide earlier, of the percent of subsidy to the, oh, where is the sheet? Can I get it just right? Subsidy to expenses, it would be around 25%, unlike the 83%, 76%, and so on back earlier. The city also had a much larger commitment financially earlier. And it's hard to look at those numbers, but if you look at them, like the $100,000 from 2007, in today's dollars, that would be $152,000. So one of the issues that we do run into is the constant rise of cost of employees. The employees actually, we've kept a lid on it and keep moving hours down and keep trimming that. That's been more control. But it is the purchasing, the utilities have gone up, the repairs have gone up. The way the lease was originally listed is that we covered all expenses under $7,500 per occurrence. Well, a lot of the repairs that we get could be $4,000, $5,000. And they are all below, so they all fall on us and we do pay for them. But in the last years, that's been over $40,000 of our budget, which, when you run on that cash basis with a razor-thin, we don't have the resources. We don't have the pockets to dip into when we end up with expenses like that. It's just something that we have been unable to do. I think there's a lot to think about with all of this and what we're asking. I don't know what the next step in this process would be, but any of your thoughts or ideas are welcome.
So the city currently does help with, you know, larger repairs.
Larger repairs. So if the furnace went out and that would be devastating to us, we'd be done then. So the city does cover those big ones, yes.
We put air conditioning out the long way.
Okay, so, you know, we are already doing some.
You're already doing a lot.
Yeah.
And I will not minimize what the city's involvement is. It is big.
I just, one clarification, which I put you on the spot and if I heard wrong or you said wrong, just please tell me. When we were talking about having a city council person on the board, you said you don't think that's a bad idea now.
Right.
Please clarify.
We had Ed Bradford on the board already.
Okay.
He had a vote.
Okay.
If we had added two people, a city representative, it would start to tip the independent votes on it. And I just, I worried about somebody, I think I used the word exactly, parachuting in, that would come into a meeting and would not be as involved in everything we do. I didn't know the impact on the board, on how that would be taken. But I do feel a good reporter back to city council is not a bad idea.
But Ed was, I mean, he was a voting member on your board?
Absolutely, he was our treasurer.
But he was also your bookkeeper, wasn't he?
Yes.
Did we get those reports? Do we have the financial statements from them? Okay.
And any reports that you would like, we can provide for you. We didn't bring everything today, but...
I just, I have one more question.
Absolutely.
Who picks your entertainment? Like, what are you, is it your board or is it your director?
It's a combination. We have a committee. The committee is made up of community people, members of our board, and our director. And we do meet and come up with ideas for different events. She does most of the work with the agents and the contracting. She's much better than I am, so I'm very happy she's doing it.
Okay. I just want to be clear too because every year I get the emails that I do not support the Ramsdale and that's absolutely not true. Like, I want to see you guys flourish and be, you know, packed every event. I just want to make sure that we're making the right decision in looking at this lease agreement.
Understood.
So... Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, citizens comment. This is an opportunity for citizens in attendance to comment on municipal services, activities, or other areas of city involvement. Limited to five minutes. Letters submitted to council will not be publicly read.
Hello again, council. I'd like to start tonight by going over the remarks I made January 7th with comment to wit. First, I'd like to see city council take a stand on the madness that is likely to begin on January 20th regarding the forced extraction of people in our communities that may have lived in them for decades or raising their children, working, paying taxes that they will never see the full benefit of and being productive, law-abiding members of their communities. This madness is morally wrong and again, I would like to see city council take a public stand on the issue. Secondly, requiring identification in order to make use of a public facility to drop off your recyclables has to be a violation of our Fourth Amendment right to privacy. If the city doesn't want to be a part of the recycling effort, say so and citizens will again throw their recyclables in the trash. But again, I don't believe you have the right to ID absent a crime and is counterproductive to the effort. to the effort. And comment. As to point one, the extraction of brown people from our community, our committee, community, excuse me, this matter deserves your attention and concern. If you have any concerns as to how these people, these fellow human beings are about to be treated, if you do take a stand on the side of compassion, you won't be the first to do so by any means. Many municipalities have also done so. Don't be afraid to take a stand. I would like it to be apparent to the electorate, our city government stands on this issue one way or the other, so please don't just avoid it, please address it. As to the second point, the ordinance requiring that you present your personal ID in order to recycle cardboard in the city, I believe this is a violation of our Fourth Amendment right. And I'm going to have to do some more looking into that because our city manager disagrees with me on that, saying that, being as you aren't forced to recycle your cardboard, you have options. You can throw it in the trash, you can burn it in your backyard, since it doesn't seem very conducive to recycling to me. Even the police aren't allowed to demand your ID absent a reasonable, articulable suspicion of a crime. By enacting this ordinance, I believe city council abrogated the Fourth Amendment by administrative order. They took our Fourth Amendment right away. The quote, a post I found on YouTube accredited to someone called @Marentine, "If ignorance is not an excuse for the accused, then it is not for the government. They should be held to a higher standard because they have the duty to protect constitutional And are you aware of the oath you swore? Please bring this up for reconsideration. It also deserves your attention. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Anybody else? Mr. Gamble.
Thank you, mayor. I'm just responding to the individual. I did speak with the city attorney about it. The city is paying a Department of Public Works employee for four hours. There are other options for recycling, for city residents to go to the Republic Yard. We're offering a weekend recycling program because PCA offered to allow us to use their trailer in our DPW yard, so we need someone to open the gate, monitor the DPW yard. So we created a program. We're using taxpayer funds to pay that employee, and absent eye-checking ID or some verification that there's a city property owner or live in the city and a resident, we've run the risk of providing, you know, having city residents, city taxpayer, pay for a service for non-city taxpayers. So I did talk to the city attorney about this. If it's a violation of the Fourth Amendment, he said requiring someone to verify residency status as part of taking advantage of a voluntary program does not implicate the Fourth Amendment or violate it. No search and seizure is occurring because the city is not compelling anything. It is legal and common for cities to require residency verification as a condition of taking part in a voluntary residence-only program. So I'll just mention that we did have that trailer over at MCC. I think we wanted to have a gated area. We wanted to make it convenient for in-town residents, so that's kind of the reason for it. It was to bridge, allow recycling drop-off between the time when we're going to be mandated to have curbside. I also don't think our neighboring communities to the north and south are, feel compelled at all to provide recycling services, so I think it's time they step up and our taxpayers should get the benefit for what they pay for. So that's really the idea behind this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other staff? Ms. Roska.
I guess I just want to say, seeing a lot of good work from our local law enforcement agencies with the drug trafficking and arrests and the difficult situations you've encountered lately, so thank you, and congratulations to Sergeant Hayner.
Mr. Grabowski.
Bill, if we issued a run water, people have been calling me if they should be running their water because their temperatures are at six, all that.
Yes, I believe that notice was issued. I don't know.
I did get a letter.
Did you? The city maintains a list of houses that have been susceptible or have froze in the past, and until those houses have had some sort of construction and alteration that would not lead them to be susceptible, they stay on what we call a run water list. That list is, the people that are on those lists are notified each year when the water department feels that there's some risk involved. So those notices went out about a week and a half ago for the affected residents. We do not have a citywide run water.
Right.
Final township issued a system-wide run water, but the city does not have a system-wide.
Okay, I don't know if they got a letter or not. They just called me and...
Yeah. So there's been, we've received quite a few phone calls today, so I appreciate the opportunity to clarify that. But as of right now, only the people that were notified should run their water. Those that are, that are, were not notified by the city in writing, they can elect to do that on their own, but they don't receive a, an adjustment on their water bill.
Wow, you up there, did you, are we plowing North Water Street? The lady called me today and said that lady in the corner house has got a heart condition.
We're providing some limited maintenance, and plowing is not one of those to that particular area. It's, right now, it's based on title searches. It is private property, but it doesn't, is on our Act 51 map.
Okay.
Yeah, we haven't plowed that in about three years.
Yeah, I know. I've been keeping track of it. I thought we were having a hearing on that, Bill. We were going to have a meeting or something.
Correct. In February, mid-February, I'm planning to have a closed session. We can discuss some options with that.
All right, good.
Anything else, Jim?
No.
Ms. Kek.
No, I'm fine, thank you.
Ms. Lasky.
I think it's positive, it's about, it's over $2 million, almost $2.4 million just tonight in grants that Manistee has actively received, and that's not counting the other ones for both sides of the Riverwalk and also for the man-made. This is what an opportunity. If those grants all get in place this year, it's going to be changing for the city. So we've been, it's been a blessed year to get all those grants. We've got a lot to look forward to and a very busy summer.
Mr. Smith.
I'm all set, thank you.
Just very impressed that Jordan Lapointe is going to be joining the force, and our wonderful young people are coming back and supporting their community.
Thank you. I just want to congratulate Sean Spicer on, Sean Middleton Spicer, on 30 years, so thank you, and I will take a motion to adjourn.